We have another empty seat in our council meeting tonight. This time it is John Trudish. How ironic that John's seat is right next to what was Ken Smolgin's seat, who we lost several months ago. And we developed friends on council, and John Trudish and Kenny Smolgin are friends. Now they can share their friendship in heaven in the company of our Lord. John was a councilman who was for the people. He gave a lot of his time to the community, to the South Ward Playground in Bunkers, and other things. And he always wanted things for the Owl Creek community where he lived. John was a parishioner of St. Peter and Paul's Church in Tamaki. And he was the cemetery caretaker there for forty-two years. But early lingers told me that John always did more than he asked of them. And the residents of Tamaki know that all too well. John was a strong man, and I believe he fought his illness until the end. We will miss John and make his soul rest in peace.
(Inaudible)
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 We'll have the reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on March 4th, 2014.
Make a motion to the second. It's written.
One second.
The motion goes through in a second by Tom. Does anybody want to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Communications.
I have two. The first is from Gina Hunsticker. "I am just letting you know that the family and friends of the late Angela Surfus that you all will be holding a candlelight vigil for her at the Tamaki Depot Square Park on Saturday, June 14, 2014, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. No fire police or other actions are needed from the borough. This is just a courtesy message to you." And the second one is from John Jackhold. "With all due respect to the recent untimely and unfortunate passing of Councilman John Trudish, please consider this letter as my expression of interest in filling his now vacant Borough Council seat. Attached, please find a copy of my resume, which will enlighten you as to my qualifications and experience for the position. Thank you for your consideration." And that's all I have.
Well, Ms. John, quite a bit, and unfortunately, we have to continue with our business. If there is anybody who is interested in serving on council, please submit a letter. Council will be filling that vacancy if the next council meeting. I think there's another letter? Yeah. I think there's another letter. (Inaudible) While we're waiting for Kevin to get the last communication, I had a request from Bob Secconi to give us an update on the development of the residential development of Owl Creek. So if you don't mind, I'll give you a little early, Councilwoman Dolge, just to get an update on the housing development that's going on.
I do know this Kevin, so I'm sure you've got before.
I remember you. I'm not sure that everybody knows.
Yeah, there's some new members here, some new faces, so. I am Kevin Grayberg. I work for the company of research and development in Buffalo. And we've been working on the Owl Creek project with Mr. Secconi for, what, nine years. The reason we're here tonight, and we're not asking for any decisions to be made, is more of a courtesy for, one, the new members, and, two, some of the engineer comments that were written in the email of us, and I sense talk to these, of course, on the concerns of the project. A little history. Mr. Secconi has, we have done six lots on the north side of Owl Creek Road that have been approved and in the process of being constructed and homes being placed on the lots. The other part of this second project that we're involved with is the other side of Owl Creek Road. Back in 2005, we received approval for a PRD for...
What's a PRD?
A planned residential development. For 137 lots and 33 acres. Due to the economy turning down back then, around 2008 or so, we started to reconsider and pull back of what we could do. We came upon the zoning hearing board again in 2005 to get a modification to approve the PRD, which we received, for 27 single-family lots. Basically, in that control, the original plan of the 27 lots... And I'll let you see this how I can show it. This is Owl Creek Road. This is the side that has the current six lots that were in process of being built. We received the modification to the PRD for 27 lots, but then, this is the reservoir that goes back to that old road. So this plan has been approved, granted approval, with conditions that we give approvals from the DEP, a county issue district, which we're in process of working on. Now, due to the economy being, again, not as great, we decided, and also to try to get quicker turnaround approvals on for, from DEP. We have revised it to show basically the seven lots along Owl Creek Road. Now, we have left an opening for where the original road was, redesigning, 27 lots, in the same position in between these two lots. This plan is basically the same seven lots around the 27 lot. Our intentions are to get these approved. We are already submitted to the DEP for stormwater. We just received a review letter on Thursday, so we're in the process of having those items resolved. We are intending, once those lots are constructed, to continue and finish the original 27 lot plan.
And the proposal is a phase, basically phase construction of the original?
I'm gonna call it a component instead of a phase.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's the same thing. It was, we just found it would be easier, quicker, and I don't know if you all understand, DEP, the way the new regulations have been in the last few years, it is very, very difficult and stringent regulations to get approved. We don't fear that we cannot get the rest of these units in. It's the time that it was gonna take, and the time that they take to review these plans is extremely long.
How does breaking into components speed up the process?
There's less infrastructure for the stormwater that we have to do for all of them, but we can just do individual lots with our own type of stormwater infiltration lines.
No, these lots have changed. These are up by the road now.
No, they're the same seven lots that are in this plan here. They're right here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay, and then you're just not putting them over, the lower lots?
Correct. And again, we left this right here is the opening between these two lots. Exactly the same lot lines, same size. The only thing that we did was turn the building envelopes of these two lots that were facing this road to this road. Only thing we did. The only change. Grading will remain the same. Easement's remaining the same. The buffer's remaining the same along Owl Creek Road, because there's a high quality stream. We're limited on how far we can develop towards the stream. (Inaudible)
The current grading on the access roads, if you haven't shown there, I mean, that rating might have to be, is it stone, is it trees, is it grass? You talking here?
Yes. That will remain grass until we decide to build a...
So you guys maintain that on some level?
This piece again?
Mm-hmm.
It's actually part of this larger residual lot, eight, sorry?
Let me cut to the chase. If you've got a house on one side of the, I'll call it Paper Street for lack of a better word, and a house on the other side of Paper Street, and they're cutting their grass, who's gonna cut the grass in the middle?
That would be my responsibility.
That's what he's looking for.
As part of the, he's still gonna have to maintain that until, again, we go forward. And I don't anticipate this taking too long, once these get done, to continue this. So it shouldn't be that long a time.
But at the same time, you are taking the steps to break it into different components, so it's taking longer than you'd wanted to.
Well, and that's, you know, blame your family.
Well, it's not a criticism, but it's just an observation.
Yeah, that's fine. So, yeah, we're here just to make sure, because these plans are submitted to the borough, have been, they're in the engineer's hands for review. Supposedly, according to Dave Horst, the engineer, you will have them reviewed for the next meeting.
Okay. This is, basically, this is information on this plan.
That's it.
Okay.
I just, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of it, and then you see the plan and what's going on, and why are we doing what we're doing, and that's all.
Okay.
I take the homes that you put on the north side are very nice, and hopefully they're selling soon.
Slowly, but we're hoping that these continue, and we can finish them in. I think it'll be a very nice development. Any other questions or concerns, or comments?
Anything we can do?
Speed up the approval.
I don't know. I guess...
Is the borough approval or DEP?
Yeah.
Both?
Well, you know what? Your approvals are fine, because you already given us approval. But, yeah, it's DEP in the concentration of the borough. We gotta want to prove to them.
Not sure we can do anything about those.
No, not really.
We appreciate you coming in. We don't have a lot of developers in Tamaki building new things, and so it's nice to see you guys doing this and investing in Tamaki, hope it works out financially for you, because otherwise, none of us folks, so...
Yeah, if you do know anybody, DEP, please, you know, convince them that this is good, and we're not doing any harm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It was...
Ready to go back to correspondence. We do have one more, these correspondents that we just received, the decision, the council does not have a positive credit on their account.
It's from, excuse me, Robert Hagerty, 222 East Broad Street, apartment 510. "Gentlemen of the Borough Council, I would like to submit my name for replacement on Borough Council. You may remember me talking about the parking meters in front of the ABC High Ride. I have a desire to be very active within the community and hope this is an area that I can achieve through this replacement. I have lived in Tamaki for the last nine years, eight of which on Bay Street. Prior to coming to Tamaki, I served on the Board of Directors at Indian Mountain Lake Albrytsville. Maintenance at the level of high school and some courses in college. I am married with eight children, all of whom are married. I'm also very active in the Knights of Columbus and my local church. I hope this is enough information. If you need more, I would gladly be able to give it to you."
If you have anything else hidden in your office of the letters, we got them. Borough manager's report.
Okay. What I'd like to talk with you first about tonight is, we have several vacancies of our staff due to the people taking advantage of our retirement program. So, I don't need anyone. We need a financial salary committee, and we decided to start by hosting a meter reader position and also the vacancy at our sewer plant. They were posted in-house for people, current employees that wish to transfer, and there were no applications for the sewer plant. We did receive one for the meter reader position, and that came from John Comisak. He would like to be moved from the Water Distribution Department to the meter reader position. So I think that's a deep consideration. If that is approved, then that would, of course, create a vacancy in the Water Distribution Department, I mean, with, but first, there's a 30-day trial period with John in the meter reader position to make sure that, of course, we'll vote him in-house.
So we're looking for a motion to fill that vacancy. Is there a timeline or date, if he was slated tomorrow or the next day, or how does it work?
Would be effective immediately. Dave Preston is working on it, and will be able to do so for about a week, and then he intends to, you know, go about his retirement.
How long has the position been advertised for?
It has to be advertised in-house at least five days.
So it's been, and he's the only person that has children, so I say we...
I always...
Is there a second?
It's actually the case.
The motion by Justin, a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. So you're now posting the water vacancy?
Yeah, I suppose we'll have to wait for that 30-day trial period to pass, and then we'll come back. Can you post one, can you...
We'll record.
Record, because we have three months that we have for the position. So, would you like me to do that?
As proactive as we can be, it would be beneficial, given the amount of transfers that may take place now as a result of the changes.
And, well, as far as the sewer plant vacancy is concerned, our next step would be to look for outside applicants that have a license or some kind of education that would help them get a license in a short amount of time, so I'll, I'll be a special authority to pursue that. The other thing I may want to discuss with you tonight is our garbage and recycling contract. In the previous meetings, I mentioned that our current three-year garbage and recycling contract is expired in May, so I've been putting together the contract documents for that. And today, I had a discussion with our library of rooms to market transfers, picks up our garbage recycling. And he indicated to me that he would be willing to pursue a one-year extension of our current contract and no increase.
Basically exercising the clause covered in the contract.
Correct. Yeah, the contract does provide for that, for that situation. So I said, "Well, that sounds great." I said, "Let me bring it 20 in tonight and give the council opportunity to pursue that."
I'd make a motion to approve a one-year no-cost increase extension of our construction contracts.
(Inaudible)
Mike asks if we can do it in a month. Hopefully the motion's in the drawn. We'll have Mike check the contract and make sure that...
I know it's a project, and I want to make sure that the council, they're, they're trying to use the industry better, better provide human participation, because you were a challenge. I know it's in every deal with that, but I don't know.
We do have time.
Yeah, just make sure we don't hit it.
Also, I received another agreement for a lighting project for one of our buildings, and we had overlooked this when we did the lighting studies in our other buildings. So, Lenape Solar, who did our lighting replacement project in all of our buildings, they went down through the aerial garage, that's the building that we had opened up, and gave us a study to upgrade the lighting and go into a more energy-efficient type of thing. So I believe council has a copy of the study. The total project cost would be roughly $1,700. PP&L would pay approximately $500 of that through their, this program, so our cost would be $1,200. And with our annual electric savings, we would accrue that cost in about 3.8 years. So I...
If I may, you know, this is something, part of my professional life as well, although I did not prepare this agreement. I ended up to do with the preparation of this. But as far as returns on the benefit are concerned, usually anything two years or less, you know, is almost no-brainer, go ahead and exercise that project. Between two years and five years, it's a little bit questionable. You can, there's no harm in doing it, but there's also, you know, there's no harm in not doing it. And usually, anything beyond five years, you know, the way you consider it to be, do not consider it unless there was some other really pertinent, long-term benefit that the customer, the owner, would think of. This 3.8-year payback sort of falls right in the middle of that two-to-five, ife range, but, you know, the building that it's for, and this is my opinion, is the aerial building, which, you know, the current Tamaki's gonna own for a number of years. As was all, I think it would still be a good project to take care of, or take advantage of this rebid program that's available now, and go ahead and make that pretty competitive energy benefit for the long term. So I would make a motion to approve the agreement. I'll second it. A motion by Dave and a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Is it for the whole building or just the whole side? Yeah, that's on the other side. The whole building. The study's proposed, I'll do it.
Any other questions? Is anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
And just two other points to bring up tonight. I did get a notice from the Scuba County Tax Claim Bureau for two properties that they received bids on in the repository. Those properties that are available for sale are 27 East Elm Street and 537 East Elm Street. And I refer those to our code enforcement department to check on the properties, see what, if any code violations are there, and also the potential there is if they have issued an uncorrected code violation. And I hope to come back to you with those results at the next meeting. And lastly, note the weather's getting a little nicer. We were talking about starting up the street sweeper again. Our plan is to start that back up in April, weather permitting, of course. So we...
Is it possible to get it out sooner, particularly on Stadium Hill and Spruce Street? Because with the buses and, I mean, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic walking through and from the school, and it is like, it's like downtown Beijing.
Oh, we could. Assuming the mechanics have a chance, you know, probably need to, you know, give it a wash over.
If we could prioritize that, that would be a big help. We spent all winter long dumping antiscit on the ground, and the buses and the cars and the trucks chew it up, and then when it gets dry, it gets airborne and people start breathing it.
Yeah.
While we're on that, we have two sweepers. Why didn't we use it? We're using an older one that we were told was gonna be needed to be replaced, and I have another one sitting in the garage, not being used.
What we do is both of them, they're, they're different types of sweeper. One's we can get there, and the other one's mechanical, so we do use both of them for different applications.
Do we have any idea on what, with pothole patching, et cetera, street paving, what our plans are with that? Have you started thinking about that yet?
Yeah, yeah, we've been patching, and we'll continue to do so. Cold patches in high demand, so we, we're running low, and the plants aren't making it as quickly as we'd like.
But I mean, tar mite will fix it, not just patching.
Oh, yeah, certainly. We can talk to the power, the streets to resurface this year. I can share that with you.
Yeah.
We have a few, we have a few ideas, but we'll have to run by a council press to make sure they're okay with it.
Anything else, Kevin? Thank you. Police chief is not here tonight. Mayor, did you give you a report? Committee reports. Parking and traffic committee.
Yeah, so we have a couple motions, like make a motion to approve a handicap parking space for that, what is it? Carol, Carol Cagney, 422 West Row Street. Second.
With a motion by Dan and a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
I'd make another motion to approve a handicap space for Linda Miller at 447 Willing Streets. Second.
With a motion by Dan and a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
I just wanted to run over a couple other things quickly. Parking and traffic meeting on Tuesday, the 11th. We ran, we ran through the handicap applications. We discussed Mr. Kabulko on Dutch Hill. I have not had the opportunity to go to see him yet. We also received another application from the Valentines on High Street. We briefly discussed the stop sign at Nescafe integrity avenue, and Kevin and Rob have given us some additional feedback on that. Talked about Lafayette Street issues and the All Street Solutions Test Drive Program. Mentioned to Kevin about this Wataran Row Street lot, that some of the renters there were requesting some more signage. Review the unloading zone requests from Danny Regal, and came up with some alternatives for him. I met with Danny on, I believe that was Friday at noon, and talked to him about it, so I will continue to push that forward. Did speak to Kevin about the no-parking zone on Oregzberg Street, Lower Cherry Street. Wasn't quite sure what that was. Kevin gave me some input on that. And so removal policy, Rob and Kevin were on hand, basically gave us a quick overview of why things are done. Talked about a couple things, like curb-to-curb, alternative side of the street parking, things like that, that we would, you know, like to maybe progress a little bit more through next year. Again, the policy hasn't been reviewed since 2009. So between this year and next year, we're gonna just take another couple looks at it and see if there's anything. Just to clarify, Dave, is it before next week or before next week?
Thank you. I didn't know you were really sitting out, and I didn't get a chance to attend the meeting. So if I could at the next meeting, sit in, that's my luck, too. I know, the mayor said he did say something, but I didn't remember, so that's luck, not about me.
No problem. Whatever.
The next, the next meeting that you guys do have, I would like to sit in there and throw a few of my ideas in there, too. But I like the progression. The mayor told me a lot of things were discussed and talked about, so if we could just keep moving forward and get some things fixed.
We had greater attendance than we're here at council meeting. Last, I think, two and a half hours.
Yeah, but again, thanks to Rob and Kevin for their time and going through that with us. As far as, we also got some correspondence, which I didn't get to Georgia, from the residents of the 400 block on Spruce Street regarding parking at the rear of their property, which is, I believe, Cole Street.
Cole Street.
Cole Street.
No, it's not. It's Ray Street.
Ray Street, Ray Street, adjacent to the high school. And again, we will try and progress some of the issues they've raised there with the Tamaki School District. I know Dave has been in touch with...
I was talking to the athletic director.
The athletic director, and he was talking about parking issues with respect to...
Sports.
Sports, and practices and whatnot, and it just seemed like a logical progression, saying, "Well, hey, we had this issue come up just a couple of days ago."
Right.
"Who's the right person to talk to?" I believe it's Mr. Kinder.
Okay.
And we probably should, he raised aware, and we just need to schedule a meeting, I think, to bring our concerns to him and see where we can go with that. Right. I did, I did just send him a hello email, and... Right, I did, I did just send him a hello email and let him know that we got some correspondence regard, regarding parking in that area. We also reviewed the petition from the high rise regarding the parking situation on Broad Street. Mr. Haggerty was in attendance, representing the people on the petition. We did talk about the replacement project, the meter replacement project, what the genesis of that was, how it developed. We also talked about a rate review, several rate reviews that I have done. We briefly discussed alternatives, and I guess the committee's position was that based on the justification for the CDU G money, that at this point, we were not going to do anything regarding the parking on Broad Street. There was a whole long list of things that related to the general commercial areas in that narrative in the, in the proposal or the project narrative. And again, I believe that the committee's position is that the parking on Broad Street is to support the businesses on Broad Street, and I believe in that area, we have fourteen businesses, more so than it is to the residential parking, and so there was no action taken at that time. That's it.
Quite a report. I can see why you're meeting those two in two hours.
Lot to do.
Recreation and Youth Committee.
I have one motion. I'd like to make, oh, this is in response to a letter that I understand was received at last meeting from Gina Deppis, representing Salvation Army. And my motion is to approve a request from the Salvation Army to hold the kids' carnival in North Village Street Park in October twenty fourteen.
A second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Kevin, if you could please send her a letter indicating, thank you. And I have nothing further.
Any other committee reports? Is there anybody from the floor that wishes to progress counsel about any matter? How's the time? Stand up and state your name and address for the record, please. Or you can stay seated if you want to.
Ray Sell, three twenty four Row Street. I just want to bring up a couple things about the North Little Ward Program. Man, Rob have been pretty much busting our butts up there. You know, for the summer, I don't know how much we're going to do since the old committee members decided to give everything to the baseball association. Now, I'm not against the baseball association, but they got a hell of a lot more money than we ever did. We have zero balance, and I approached Bill Onks about trying to get the slush machine back. And he told me in a nice way, I got a better chance to see him gone. He said, you know, if council, you know, maybe if council would give him a buzz, maybe he would think of it. But his use for it is, and it didn't come out of his mouth, it came out of someone else's mouth, is there's not much use up at Bungalow, you know, it's the little tikes up there, bitty league and T-ball. I think we're going to be doing the stuff up there, but I think he's more interested in using it for parts for the Dutch Hill Stadium. And I mean, what I want to know is what gave the last committee members the right to donate any of that equipment to anybody, you know? I looked at the old meetings minutes, okay, and when they all resigned, that stuff got donated afterwards. So to me, that's that. They went in there after they resigned, took it all out, gave it to baseball. We're up there, you know what I mean? Him and I have a lot of money put into there already out of our own pockets. I don't mind doing it, okay? I don't mind putting my money out because it's for the kids, all right? But I can't afford, you know, thirty eight hundred dollars for a slush machine that should have never left the building to begin with. You know, Robert and Debbie Fenstermacher, they donated a popcorn machine for us. It's one of them that, you know, rolls on the wheels. That'll suffice, and we'll be all right with that, you know? But it just has me gripping how the last committee members could just, here you go, you can have it. I approached Kim Woodward, and her words to me were, we didn't think anybody would take it over. And I said to her, so you guys just, you know, pretty much thought you just resigned, that she's going to get padlocked, steel rolled, nobody can take it over? And she said, pretty much. And they were her exact words. And that happened up at the school while I was picking my son up, and I started to get, get a little upset there, so I walked away. But I want to know why it was given away, and I'm not getting answers from anybody. You know, I asked Kim, you know, I asked Bill Onks, you know, he told me who gave it to them, okay? And by rights, you know, I want to back, you know, we can't afford it, we have zero balance. Well, actually, Robert and Debbie gave us not only a popcorn machine, but a two hundred dollar donation, and I believe they're giving us a hot dog roller machine. They just bought it on eBay, I believe, for us. So, you know, donation wise, we're doing good, but you know what I mean? The slush machine not only has me upset, it has a lot of other people upset, you know? And I know you guys, you know, when we, when we came in for that little meeting about taking it over, I know you guys pretty much said, we're on our own. But I mean, I'd like a little help if somebody maybe can call Bill Onks and explain, we have nothing, okay? We're gonna, you know, they'll have slushes if I have to run a turkey hill again, you know? I'm not going to let the kids down. There's kids already up there, you know? I plowed the basketball court, all right, for the kids to play basketball, you know? And then the parts that I couldn't move, kids seen me doing it, they came with shovels to help, all right? So, yeah, they had an early, you know, good time to be playing basketball, a little cold for me, but, you know, we're up there busting our butts, you know, trying to get everything ready for spring and summer, you know? And all I keep thinking about is the slush machine and how the old committee members could even think of doing it. You know, to me, it just seemed like it was a spiteful thing to do, like, you know, they're usually going to start with nothing, you know? And it's not fair, and I think they should be held accountable for it if we can't get it back. I mean, it's nothing personal, I know them all, I like them all, but what they did was total bull.
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is thank you, Ray, and Bob, and everybody else who's helping out, and has stepped forward to take over the Playground Association. That, that step is so important to keeping that playground going.
Right.
And we really want to thank you for doing that. I know it takes a lot of time and money, not only for these families, but as you can see, the kids out there helping each other, it is important that that happens, and hopefully other people will step up and help you. As far as the property of the Playground Association, it's a, the borough owns the land, and we have an agreement, we have a maintenance agreement with the Playground Association, that any of the supplies, any of the inventory, any of the equipment belongs to the Playground Association, and there's no way for us to require anybody to give that equipment back or anything like that. We could certainly reach out to the baseball association and just explain the situation.
That's all the mess.
And we could do that, but I just want to make sure that the expectation is clear, that we, there's no way that we could.
I understand you can't force, you know, but.
And we can't, we can't, we can't stop Playground Association from making bad decisions.
And that was a whole.
I think, I think giving everything away really.
And I, you know what I mean? And I'm not, I don't want to put them down because honestly, they're a nice bunch of people to talk to, you know what I mean? But they weren't using their brains. I mean, the best thing they did when they resigned was, you know, getting their backpacks for the kids and the school supplies, so when they drained the bank account, you can't get mad at that, all right? They did, it was awesome what they did, you know, that part of it. All right, so I don't mind starting out with the zero balance because of what they did there. It's just they're kind of stopped us from making some money so we can do things like that, you know? Things came through the grapevine, you know, from some of the officers that he said, she said, in one ear, out the other, unless I hear it coming from them, I'm not going to believe it.
The best thing to do is try to move forward with it.
That's what we're doing.
Certainly council's going to support the new, the new leadership of the association in any way that we can. Justin, do you want to say something?
Is there anything that we can do as council to protect this from ever happening again? Because if, if something, say the Southwood Playground, all those people that go there every single day and buy stuff from the concession stand or go to their fundraisers and stuff, that money is from that part of the community, and which that money then goes and buys the supplies and equipment, et cetera, for that concession stand. Is there anything that we can do to save, like I said, for this happening again? Can we put something in writing to where the associations understand that if they own buy equipment for that specific concession stand, that it stays there to that war? I mean, to not just go and give it away, because here we are with people who want to take over and they're left with absolutely nothing.
No, we can't do it without getting meat deep in their daily operations. You can imagine if Southwood Playground had to check with council every time they got a new piece of equipment or sold a piece of equipment and made a change. So we run the risk of trying to get in their business too much, they're private, they're a private club. The best thing to do is try to keep people.
I think it's just common sense, you know what I mean? That the only way you should get rid of stuff is if it's unfixable or it's going to cost too much to fix it rather than getting a new one. There's nothing wrong with it, you know? And again, I think it was spiteful, I think it was dirty what they did, but you know what? I'm just gonna, you know what I mean, go on, and we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna get a slush machine, you know? I don't care if I gotta go out, take a loan out myself, there's going to be one there, okay? I'm gonna start going, seeing what we can do about donations, and see about getting something in the paper, you know? We're pretty much begging, you know, and that's what hurts the most, okay? Because when we walked in there, all right, my mother-in-law lives right across the street, and she said, I think so-and-so took it out, put it in his truck, and so I don't know where he took it. I'm like, whatever. And we finally got the key to it, and I walked in and seen everything was gone. Honestly, I wanted to cry. I'm like, wow, we are working with nothing, you know? So, you know what? I sat there out of my own money, and he went for, for me. I changed the locks immediately that day, you know, got new locks for everything. I changed, tonight we just changed the side entrances because we, well, I caught people two nights ago in there, oozing it up, and they left real quick. I mean, they were older, but, you know, of age. But I, I go up there at night quite a bit just to make sure nothing else is being vandalized. The person that put Yo Butch on that one sign where the, by the basketball thing, well, tonight I just went up, I got the graffiti off the equipment, that's been scrubbed, it's all, you know what I mean, it's gone. I got the graffiti off the side, the sliding board. You know, I shouldn't say, I, me, me and Rob, okay, we're putting our own money out there. I'm not looking to recoup any of the money back, all right? I'm donating it, you know? It's just, you know, to me, it was dirty politics is what they did, you know? I, it just seemed like they didn't want to see us, you know? You know, their, their kids are all old enough that don't.
And I think we, we will help people well, I don't know, like, we all know what happened.
Right.
And Mayor, I don't know if you want to.
I just make a quick comment, and, and, fellas, I think it's honorable what you guys are doing, stepping up and, and helping out here in the leadership for the Little Ward Park. I do appreciate everything that the past leadership have done. They, they really, they hung in there for a long period of time. They were looking for new blood, people to help out. I mean, they certainly weren't quiet about that, they were reaching out in every which way they could. At their last ditch effort is when they finally resigned and walked away.
Right.
I always try and remain as positive as possible, and I would never want to reflect any wrong thoughts or improper thoughts about what may have happened, but I, I think they have seen their share of vandalism throughout the time period it was there, and if they were to just leave it there and walk away and not have any type of supervision over the property, and it ended up getting vandalized, nobody would have benefited from it.
Right.
It would have been a total loss in the end. So what we may think in hindsight may have been done improperly, and been in the best interest of the donations that have gotten that equipment and, and moving forward and how it could benefit the community and the children of Tamaka.
Right.
And not being a total loss due to vandalism. So again, as I thank you for the honor of stepping up and helping out, try to remain positive, and that positive spin definitely helps you move forward in the best way.
Absolutely, I mean, I'm going to stay positive with it. I'm not going to turn my back on the kids. I mean, I'm there for the kids, not just my own. You know, and I'll be there as long as, you know, people want me there, long after my kids are, you know what I mean? It's just, I love doing it, I love the kids, you know what I mean? I, my brother and his wife, I mean, they got a kid factory going, so, I mean, there's lots, okay, that I'm going to be coming up with here.
Be a lie.
But, you know, it's just, but now, I also got an estimate on that roof, and that roof, the whole thing ought to come off, okay? And I got the estimate off of Jimmy Waugh, who by far would have been the cheapest, he's going to donate his time, okay? It's going to need all new plywood. I mean, I got everything, everything written down, okay, that he said, and it's going to be, I mean, all new plywood, it's going to be the five eighth inch, all new ice shield, he's going to put thirty year shingles on it. I guess it's the inch and a half, all new drip edge around the whole roof, because what they have on it now hardly covers anything. He's going to use his own, you know.
I don't, I don't, I'm going to, 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 but I don't want to interrupt you, but if, maybe you can meet with the Recreation and Youth Committee and work and talk about any details and then some of them.
Okay, yeah, but the only thing I wanted to say is that two thousand dollar grant, is that still there for the roof?
Yes.
It still is.
No, but there's, because it's federal funding, there's some strings attached, so to speak. We might have to get more than one quote.
That's fine.
That's being done.
I mean, that's fine, he's going to use his guys.
Give me a call, and we can work through that. And I just want to make sure we go about it properly, so they don't disapprove.
Right, absolutely. As long as I know that that grant's there, that, you know what I mean, because it's getting bad, real bad, so we need to get it done soon.
We asked for fifteen hundred, and we approved two thousand.
Okay. He, as he said, it's going to be over three, but he said he'll swallow anything over to two because him and his workers, so if anybody can beat that, well, then we'll use them, you know what I mean?
If you can work with Kevin and the committee just to make sure we do things properly, and a lot of times the grant funding we get has specific requirements.
Yeah.
Okay. Kevin, I guess there was one thing. You had occasionally done a cleanup over there, are you talking about doing a cleanup again this year at the park?
Possibly.
I could get one of those when I was there and just once or twice.
Yeah, we, we've had cleanups in the past with the boy scouts, girls, girls, you know, others. There is a Schuylkill Keeper Pre Cleanup in April, I guess the twenty fifth or twenty sixth. Sometimes it's done in conjunction with that.
Okay.
Bob is very active.
Let's do it then.
With the scouts so well, we have worked it.
I only found out who did the graffiti also. You know, I said something to the kids, and next thing I know, everybody pulled, gave both names of the kids that did it. You know, cost you five bucks, but hey, they got the names. So we're gonna talk to their parents and let them know what's going on, you know? So, but now I'm done.
Thank you. Anybody else from the floor wish to address counsel about anything? Any of the scouts? Can someone, someone from your troop just stand up and maybe introduce what members you have here? And please tell me why you're here on the Zoom room.
Today, the scouts are here for an assistive shift in the community badge. And this is the last step that we need to take before we earn a badge. And myself, Mrs. Segal, Isaac Miller, Anthony D'Angelo, Om Brezwick, and JJ, I'm sorry. Jeremiah Bear. And Brad Compton just went to the bathroom. And all of us, a few of us need to take it, but it'd be good for us all to come and see how the meetings work and enjoy a borough council meeting.
So, thank you. Do you have any questions or issues in any borough, anything?
Nothing.
It's a participatory sport here. Don't be afraid to speak up. Thank you for coming. Anybody else on the floor? Okay, Mayor's report. Solicitors report. We have the various reports of the borough departments.
Make a motion to the Assembly's group.
We have a motion by Dave and a second by Justin to accept the reports of the borough departments. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. Unfinished business.
Make a motion to adopt an ordinance decreasing the membership of the Tamahua Planning Commission from seven to five members.
Motion by Dave and a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Wait, this is just for now, right? Like, if they end up, like, this is on temporary, is that what it was originally for?
This will be a permanent, a permanent reduction in the number of planning commission members.
Correct, they were at five and eighty-three, so to say.
Okay. But it's a permanent reduction. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Kara.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Mace.
Yes.
Startsel.
Yes.
Gersky.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to a resolution establishing procedures for choosing professional services for the borough's pension plan. A motion by Justin and a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor upstart, or the roll call vote. The resolution.
Kara.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Mace.
Yes.
Startsel.
Yes.
Gersky.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve an investment advisory agreement with TCG Investment Advisory Incorporated for the borough's pension plans.
Motion by Dave, a second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments, Mayor?
The group, that Trojan Consulting Group, the group that we've been...
They change your name.
T stands for Trojan.
We don't normally refer to it as TCG, but I guess that's the problem.
Any other questions or comments? I said, good question, who are they? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. Any other unfinished business? The bills and claims look before the borough.
I sat down with Dean this morning. And I'd like to make a motion that we pay all the bills and pay the boroughs.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Dave for the bills. Anybody have any questions or comments?
You should have.
Yeah, well, I just thought it was nice. Yeah, why?
We just reviewed them today. It's, again, there's a lot of work to preparing the bills. And it's always been a policy for the finance department to prepare the bills for the last meeting of the month. And she's got to work to gather them all together and to type them up and to...
And we're going through the transition with parents retiring.
Okay, I was just wondering. They're usually included in the borough package, which then you have an opportunity before the next one. If you will do any of the bills and have any questions, I would just, I would encourage you to do that.
The bills from the month, there's, you know, some that stick out that aren't usual month-to-month, but a lot of them are just from per month-to-month, you know, for the street department or for the sewer plant, for the water plant, the testing area, paid improvements, maintenance drills.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. Any new business?
We went to the training that's going on in Tamahua. Up at El Tri, I see there's some training going on for four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. It's quite extensive, and this is from the Tamahua Safety Initiative. And I had signed up for it in January because I retired, because I was, I would be able to attend four days. And then as it got closer and closer to the event, I said to myself, well, what did I sign up for? I mean, we go in there for four days, it's gonna be tough. When I went there on Monday, I told my wife, I said, I might go there tonight, I'm talking to you on the phone. But the people that are presenting this are so outstanding. I went to a lot of training in my life, air products. These people are so enthused and so pumped up about this initiative to stop violence in a community that I'll go again tomorrow, and I'll go on Thursday, and to listen to these people present this. And on Monday, I guess there was about fifty people there. And, I mean, the district attorney was there, a lot of people from her office were there. People from Penn State's Cooper were there.
A lot of, a lot of community groups, somebody from the Head Start Association, people from the Art Center, just some parents.
And importantly, we're proud. We sent, there's two of our police officers there, they were very happy to see, because this is about violence and how to reduce violence in your community. And it talks about how to be, when you're a bystander, how to stop a crime before it happens, how to stop a rape before it happens, how to intervene with somebody before they, before they commit a crime. And the one instructor is from University of Kentucky, outstanding person. And the other person is from Washington State, I guess he went to Minnesota. And they're just, we just want to listen to them and hear their message, they're so dedicated to this cause. But what they're trying to do is teach these people at the meeting, who can then go out in the community and teach people in the community how to intervene before, you know, something bad happens. So it's very interesting, and I wanted to just, you know, let you know that Mike is there, I'm there. And two of our police officers, Mike Hobbs and Henry Woods, are going there. It's a good, it's a good thing, and I think you'll hear more about it in the future. Do you want to?
Do they plan on doing this again? Because I initially signed up too, but work right now with overtime is absolutely crazy. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to attend it. But it did look very interesting and very educational. So, I mean, do they ever say about bringing this back?
The four-day training is they're training a group of about forty facilitators, about half of which are from Tamahua, the other half are from other areas of Cooper County. And then that group, those groups will go out into the community and do community training to give people the skills to know what to do, when to do it, what not to do, and how to create a culture in Tamahua specifically, with Cooper County in general, that just doesn't tolerate violence. The training is called Green Dot, and Tom's right, you'll hear a lot more about it. But there's a lot of times where people are aware of something or they see something, and the training is just asking, the Green Dot concept is just asking people to do something positive. And so you will, there will be a lot of facilitated training for, they call it bystander training, and training people in the community, different community groups and things like that. There'll be a lot, a lot. It's, and, you know, the Safety Initiative, I know the police have been very involved with that. And Tom is right, it's all about preventing things before they happen and creating, making Tamahua known for what they do, and that tolerates violence. Four-day commitment's a lot, and so have about forty people from the county there. It's a significant investment of time. And this is something that's been proven to work in other communities. So it's not a, you know, raw, feel-good thing that just makes it feel good. It actually works, so, and then that's the law. Any other new business? We need an executive session tonight. Motion by Dave, second by Justin. All those in favor. Anyone opposed? Thank you, everybody.
I'm taking video right now.